Councilman Headland, Councilman Dorrin.
Here.
Councilman Montes.
Here.
Councilman Vidal.
Here.
Councilman Jordan, Councilman Botell, Mayor.
Here.
Our mayor.
In compliance with New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, I hereby declare that added with notice of this meeting has been provided, specifying that this meeting would be held on this date in the municipal building 55 River Road, Edgewood, New Jersey at 7:00 p.m. This notice was sent to the record and Jersey Journal, posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the Borough Hall, and posted on the Borough's website. This time I'd ask for a moment of silence and we could keep Barbara Quinlan, our thoughts and our prayers. Councilman Dorrin, would you please just look to the flag?
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have four professionals in for conference tonight and starting off the conference, we'd ask Tim Poriston and Tom Polley to step up.
Yes, Mayor. Want me to address the microphone here?
Fine.
Yes, I can ask to give a status on litigation and where we are. I'll start with Terms. As you know, Terms is one of the parties they went through as part of environmental consultant. After we put them on notice that we would be filing suit against them, they filed suit in the state court in Borough County. We then filed in the federal court. We asked them to voluntarily dismiss the action because their action is purely a collection action. They would not. We then filed a motion to dismiss with the court on similar motion in the state court. They voluntarily agreed to dismiss that matter. So the state court action is over. Terms has recently filed an answer in the federal court action. They've included a counterclaim against the Borough, which we are responding to, basically asserting that the Borough own the property and the hazardous substances on it. It is also responsible. They've also counterclaimed for their outstanding fees and things of that nature and for the breach of contract. Obviously, it's our position that Terms did not live up to the obligations under the contract, which was basically done by resolution. And that as a result, we had to expense all the money and redo a lot of the work that they did. And we've been very aggressive with suing them for the role they played in being responsible as the gatekeeper as to what went on in that field. So that's where we are with them. So that's normal litigation that you'd anticipate. Alcoa has an extension, an automatic extension from the course. They've been very laying low, just sort of waiting to see what happens. It's our theory that they're responsible since they own the property because when the contamination is created and such, when it was dumped on the field by Waterside. They apparently have some sort of agreement with Waterside that we have received a copy of and requested it as to the liabilities amongst the two of them. In terms of Waterside, as you're aware, in conjunction with the remediation that's ongoing at the field, we have been doing extensive testing as necessary to prove that the material, not only that Waterside acknowledges it, they put on the field from Alcoa, but other areas that were in dispute during our mediation process actually came from Alcoa and it's not where they came from. I'm not going to want Tom to comment on it too much, except to say that the investigation is going very well. We feel very confident in our theories and that we'll be able to hold Waterside responsible. We're also negotiating with Waterside presently, getting access to its site so we can do a site inspection and taking the samples that we deem necessary. After some initial, initially indicating they needed the approval of their tenant, we said, "Look, Everly's has a provision that the tenant has to give access to the landlord." We also said, "If we're going to mutually cooperate in terms of giving information, then you have to mutually cooperate." So basically, they've asked us for some of the data that's been generated and we said, "We will give you the data when we get the date to get access to the field." It's that simple. We've given you everything we've done to date. I received an email tonight that they're going to get a space for next week so they'll have access to Alcoa for purposes of continuing our ongoing investigation. So that's basically where we are with the litigation. What we can anticipate is that all the answers to the allegations that we filed, Waterside may file some type of motion to dismiss some of the allegations against Mr. De Avies individually. We'll respond to that. We would expect that in the first quarter of next year, we'll have our court conference with the court and have discovery deadlines set and begin the discovery process of exchanging information and questions and deposition. We are hopeful that, once we finish our investigation, that we can sit down with Waterside and try to get this resolved in a quick fashion. Though we can't control that, they have any kind of willingness to sit down once we can confirm the extent to which the contamination is related to Alcoa. In that respect, Waterside does have its environmental consultant on the project daily overseeing, which we granted access to because we're not trying to hide anything. We think everything is very readily apparent. And they've been monitoring what's been done. They've been there. They've seen what work has been done in terms of moving the red material and green material. And so far, what we've been observing, just from an observation perspective, all seem to be very consistent with the Alcoa material. So that's where we are.
All right. Thank you. All right, we'll switch it up a little. We'll ask Tom Brandberg from First Environment, stuff like that.
Hey, looking for somebody else or take that? We've essentially completed the remediation in the north portion of the park. We are 95% done. We are recommending that a certain amount of backfill be brought onto the property to structurally stabilize the excavations. During this upcoming week, we are going to be moving to the area along River Road, I mean, the river where certain spot piles are, and then we're going to move into the south parking lot to remediate that course. In essence, 5,000 cubic yards or approximately 8,000 tons have been remediated.
Mike Giraud.
Mike, this is in regards for the edification of the council. We have Resolution 267 and Resolution 269, which were going to be part of this discussion. And then we have some contractual discussion in those later. So that, those are for the proposal for Little League Field and your construction management.
Okay. Again, just to follow up with what First Environment just went on, to keep the project moving and moving forward from the cleanup stage, what they're working on now, through putting back the amenities and completion of the project. I know I've been asked several questions, I think at your last meeting or so, I told you I would come back at this meeting as we get closer and tell you what the next step in terms of timing and expectations you should start planning for as you move forward. We put together a proposal for Little League Field. The governing body has to make a final determination on Little League Field first in terms of grass versus the synthetic turf in order to put that project out to bid and get construction started after the first of the year. Just to backtrack a little bit, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but the anticipation, anticipated goal and schedule for the first phase in the remediation project is January of this year, the end of January. And that'll be monitored and we have weekly meetings every Friday to go over that to make sure that it stays on schedule. And as of last Friday, everything was on schedule for that date. No work can really start on new amenities. We've been advised by the LSRP until the full remediation is completed by the contractor. So we can't get on site to start the Little League Field and/or anything else on the field until that portion of time. But from a time perspective, what you're going to have is the Little League portion of the project is the easiest to reconstruct because it virtually was done. All it really entails is parking lot and redoing the Little League Field. So, once you made that decision, the proposal we sent you tonight was to put out a bid, plan and spec to start that portion of the project immediately. I think if you want to keep it as close to simultaneously as possible from remediation to the amenities, you have to look at accepting bids sometime in January, early February, so you can get that project started the day or very soon after the remediation's completed. I would also say to you is that the remainder of the site, we have to start thinking about on how the Borough is going to handle that in terms of about putting a plan and specification out for that section. So again, it's another decision that you have to make in terms of, I know there's been some discussions, pros and cons against what you want to put on that portion of the field, whether you want to hydroseed it, sod it, or put a synthetic turf on there. But again, those decisions, it's going to be critical to keep that on a critical path starting really now in order to make sure that you get started on that project as quick as possible. People are asking for some timeframes on how long it's going to take to do things once the remediation's completed. We anticipate three months to do the Little League Field. So if you're looking at timeframes, assuming a contract is awarded in January, I don't know what February will produce in terms of our ability to get on the site with the weather to start it. It is weather dependent, but you know, you look in February, March, April, best case scenario, the synthetic turf. As I've said to the government bottom of the floor, and I'll say again, synthetic turf, if it goes in synthetic turf direction, right upon the completion of the synthetic turf in the field, you can immediately access and play. If it goes to hydroseed or sod, you really have to wait growing season, otherwise you will basically ruin the investment that you put in the field. So you're going to have to wait for the, as I said to you before, the grass to establish and grow. So those are considerations. I, for the bigger section of the field, upon again, completion of the remediation of the site, we anticipate about six months to do the remainder of the field. That may move up or down a little bit. I've asked, I've been asked for, you know, for monitoring that basically week to week, month to month right now. Because I don't know what the remediation is going to take out in terms not only volumes of material that has to be put in at the completion of their contract, which we need to know to account for in the next public bid, but I also don't know exactly. We're trying and we will work with First Environment the best we can to preserve any of the improvements that were already completed on the site and acceptable, like the walls, some of the walkways, as best we can. And then I need to find out what is still on the site at the end and make sure we accommodate in our bid everything that's been either removed. We've had some drainage removed because the contamination's in and around some of the drainage, correct Tom?
That's correct.
So we have to make sure we account for that and put that back in the revised deadlines. So I don't know, I'll open it up to questions.
Mike, let me ask you a question. The Little League Field being done three months after the remediation. We are still okay with opening the Little League Field, not the rest of the field. Because way back when, we said no. I was told no, but that's what I want to be clear on.
Yeah, I don't want to speak Tom, and please if I-
And maybe Tom is the one I should be addressing.
Well, I think what I was under the understanding is that what the no was, was we were trying to remediate the portion of the Little League Field first and then immediately go out and construct the Little League Field. The no that I heard, Councilman, was the entire site's got to be cleaned before we bring another contractor in. I don't know if I-
No, that's correct. The reason is, this is an active remediation site and people entering the park need to hold certain certifications to allow them to be on the grounds doing any sort of work. So it's our recommendation that the entire park be remediated before the Little League Field is addressed.
And we're anticipating the remediation being complete and we will, and in three months, we will have the Little League Field.
Ah, yeah, upon, you know, the contract, when I say three months-
Depending on weather and circumstances.
And the only reason I'm trying to get it done as soon as possible, because as you know from the last couple of bids, you see that sometimes there's objections to bids, sometimes it takes, it takes time to put the bid out and prepare it. It takes time to leave it out on the street to make sure you get the most competitive bid for the Borough. So, you know, in order to make it seamlessly, so we go from, again, remediation right to construction and get the project finished once and for all, I think we've got to really move quickly on getting those documents and getting everything out and ready to go.
So as long as the site's remediated, we could open a portion.
That's correct. And I can enter the site and nor can anybody else until the LSRP sign off.
Just to clarify that, as long as the site's remediated, we can begin work on the Little League Field.
Right.
As long as the site's remediated.
Once it's capped, tailored and capped, you're good to go.
And approximately what month is the week? It all goes well?
January.
It should, you know, the remediation should, for all intents and purposes, be complete by the end of January. But we're trying, we're trying to get it to a point where all of the excavations are backfilled with certified clean stone and then there's a membrane that's going to be laid down and there's going to be additional material brought on the property to keep that in place and-
And at that point, Tom, the site is safe?
Yes.
Because everything's out of there and three months later, it all goes well, we could be on that Little League Field using possibly some other amenities, the walking tracks, et cetera, et cetera, the little, the little park for the kids and so on and so forth.
Well, the little, the little parks for the kids, just so we're all clear, the proposal plan is for the Little League Field, the parking lot, and everything on that section of the property, the little walkway around the back and connect it. The playground piece would be in the bigger section of the park.
That's on the south end.
That's on the south end. And that wouldn't, that wouldn't be in that three-month window, that would be in that six-month.
The six-month, so June, July, August, possible.
Correct. And you wouldn't want anybody, and Councilman, one of the things that we looked at pretty hard when we looked at, you know, reestablishing the amenities was get the Little League Field open as soon as possible because it was, again, the easiest part of the project. But the remainder of the site is going to be an active construction site. So you're not going to really be able to put kids in place structures while you're still constructing that, just so we're clear on the situation.
Mike, or actually, Tom, you had mentioned 5,000 cubic yards. Now, when we, when we first put this whole thing together, we logistically were speaking about basically a two-phase cleanup, where we're going to keep it laying in its turn, we're going after the red first and then afterwards we're going to remove the blue. How much of that red had been removed or is that all 5,000 cubic yards?
No, the whole, all the red out of the north area, if you recall the figure, the north area has been removed. They started, you know, substantially completed the blue. Now they're going to move to the riverside of the park. We're trying to maintain the south parking lot capped for truck access so we don't, we minimize any dust generation and they're not driving across the park. So you'll see a lot of the staging of soils going on in the south portion of the park, what's already paved surface. Once that material is disposed of off-site, they're going to remove that macadam, that aspall, and start removing that soil.
So all the red, with the exception of the parking lot on the south side, south end, has been removed?
That's correct.
So you already started working on the blue?
Yes. The north area is 95% complete in its entirety. That's why we're moving, transitioning to the riverside. There's, again, if you recall the figure, there's some discreet piles along there that need to be addressed. And once that's done, they're going to move to the larger area, which is the south parking lot, and proceed with that remediation.
Mike, now, one other question with regards to perhaps low-hanging fruit as construction proceeds. The back portion of the park or the eastern side of the park, which has, we call the V8, Figure Eight on it, the track, is it possible that that might be a lot less complicated to work on than the fields itself and perhaps you can work on that, move your weight, yourselves out and, and maybe as we have, as we're hoping, hoping the Little League Field perhaps open that section of the park as well, even though there might be construction going on at the western section of the park? Is that possible?
We got to look at it a little bit closer. I don't want to not answer your question, but again, that's going to be an active section of the site, so we got to see where the drainage is. There was some drainage in that area. There was also additional material that needs to be put, I think, in that area as well as open it. And I would be just, I would recommend against opening sections of the park on the big section until it's all completed because, you know what, it's, it's dangerous and you have people moving out. So unless we can clearly isolate that Figure Eight on, I don't know where you're talking, on the back section of the park and fence it off, we could look at that down the road. But I know we're all anxious and I know it's been a very, very, you know, trying project for all of us. But again, safety comes first for anybody we put on. The Little League Field, we identified, maybe stretch it a little bit beyond Little League Field, we can easily isolate that off, they can park there, we can put a fence in and then the construction can stay on the other side of the park. But, Councilman, we could look at it, but you know what, until I really 100% figure out what's need to be done in the big section of the park, I don't want to, I don't want to say that I can do that.
Well, you know, let's just take into consideration, we've got the basketball courts right there. Usually the northern side of the, of the park has parking lot, has parking spaces and then perhaps you might be able to use, just by, by, you know, keeping just that one entrance, the northern side of the park, using that parking lot as the only entrance, perhaps we might be able to make better use of the park while we're doing work on our ends.
Yeah, I think at the back section from the basketball courts to the back of the Little League Field, we could look at constructing that first in Phase Two. And don't forget, that has to be hydroseeded. That was originally planned to be hydroseeded, so you're going to have to wait for the hydroseed to grow. When you're looking at the timeframe, by the time you're doing all of that and all the other parts, it's probably going to, that whole area's probably going to come together at the same time. But we'll do the best we can.
Not to rush you, but the basketball courts might be a possibility in that Little League portion there? That might be to use them?
Absolutely. I think from, from the, if you look at the outfield fence to the Little League Field, everything from the community center to the outfield fence, including the parking lot, that whole quadra, the side of section of the site, we can, we can absolutely open it. Can't open the tennis courts, right? Because, you know, they have, they have, they're right in the middle of the larger section. Our goal with this, this next bid is really to try to open up as much of that Little League Field area and the park as we can with, you know, again, keep it in mind that there's going to be active big construction site right next door and make sure that I say it.
One last question, Tim. With regards to the agreement that Waterside Construction has with Alcoa regarding the liabilities, is that an older document, an agreement that was written up at the time that they purchased the property?
Yeah, that's not a new document. It was a, from what I understand, what's been leaked to me is that under that agreement, Alcoa agreed to pay for a certain amount of monies for the disposal of the materials on the site. Goes back to the sale. And so Alcoa's position is, we've maxed out. Now, that's vis a vis them and Waterside. That doesn't impact your relationship with us. So yes, there's no current agreement. They're not working together.
They just didn't agree before we were there.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks. This time I'd open the meeting to the public. Mayor.
Mary Hogan, 606, on the prepared. What I just passed down to you is five pictures of the Little League Field from October 21st, 2012, up through May 2013, and October 2013. You can see the latest, later pictures of the field. The field is actually... You could get a copy from them, they have an X-ray. Is what the field looked like on October 13th, 2013. And basically, in looking at it, the field is done. Now, I know in the year that has passed since then, you know, the grass has grown up and you have that, but I don't understand unless you plan to do artificial turf, which your resolution certainly seems that's the way you're going, you know, before the election and everybody was against artificial turf, that, that that field is done. You tested it to make sure there was no contamination on it and it came back as far as I know from First Environment, it was clear. I don't understand why we're spending that kind of money. I don't understand why NAGLA engineering is going to get paid 17,000 more for Little League Field since they did the original plans. I don't understand where all this additional spending of money is coming from, especially in view of what we see as the public. I also thought, well, maybe you plan, change the plans for the Little League, not the Little League Field, but the whole park and that's why NAGLA engineering is going in again and doing more? Because they had done the whole field. When the, what was water, waters to Waterside, that was all done. I don't understand why we're doing it again, unless we change, which is possible, but I've never heard it in any of these meetings, that you change the plans as to what you're doing to the park, other than, you know, mediating it further. So I don't understand why this additional cost is coming in for that. The other question I had is obviously you're going out for a separate bid to do the Little League Field. I thought usually you save money and you do a bid for the entire project. I don't know, are we going to now sub, sub down every little part of the field that we do, which will, in the long run, will cost us more money? Because that's just how construction works. That's why on Waterside, we see the contract was for the entire field from the north end to the south end, from the, from the river to the River Road. And now we're cutting it up down into Little Light, Little, I don't understand why, because it means we're going to have to repair bid docs for the Little League Field. We're going to have to repair, repair and prepare bid docs for, and, and apparently this is costing us money even though we had bid docs for the entire project before. So I don't understand why we're doing it again and again and again. I'd also like to be reassured that when the cleanup is done, it's going to be cleaned up to the residential standard. Talking about putting down the membrane and all this kind of stuff and that makes me step back, because every time I've gone to DEP and EPA meetings, membranes means it's not clean up, that they're encapsulating the contamination. I'd like someone, either from the mayor council or from your experts, to confirm that that isn't bad. I'm just going to keep going because I have a lot of things to talk about. Icar, and I had spoken to Mr. Pransvath this early. Icar is subdividing out the portion for the affordable housing. They are giving it to, they want to give it to, let's just make it up. Forty-five River Road Associates LLC and supposedly they have a history of doing COA and COA improvements. However, that particular corporation was only formed on March 22nd, 2013. I have no idea who the principals are for it because it's not in any of the documents that were filed in the state. Well, you people know who it is. All I know is that the attorney that prepared it is formally, at least formally, I don't know if he still is, the in-house attorney for Mr. De Avies, and he rents his office from there and that is during the campaign, he had a sign for it, Mr. Headwood and Mr. Vidal on his property. So I'd like to know who the principals are on this particular thing because it appears that it's Fred and that we're going to be giving him a pilot and we'll be giving him money from the COA funds and the county will be giving him money from the COA funds, just like we've done all along. And, you know, although he didn't get the Icar property, which I was told he wanted, he at least got the affordable housing on it. We also have Resolution 268, and this is for the plans for the first aid squad. The cost of the construction, the pair of the plans and specifications is $94,000. The cost of the construction, the pair of the plans and specifications, $94,000, just for the plans. Did you go out, guys go out on bid, for bid for this? I don't, I don't know if you ever did, but $94,000 for a building that exists, I, I find that hard to believe, which doesn't even include the constr-